Come on, take your seats. We've got a couple of folks, hopefully, on the way. You know, when they get here, we'll throw them right in and they'll get to jump in where they're in, you know? First off, I just, I'm the organizing director of Metro Justice. My name's Colin O'Malley. I want to thank all of you so much for being here. And I want to particularly thank our partners in putting this together, the Rock Coalition for Public Ed, Rock Act, Citizen Action of New York, the Alliance for Quality Education. You know, we, and I also very much want to thank the candidates for taking time out of what is an incredibly hectic set of responsibilities running for office to come here and take part in sort of a dialogue with folks in the community and with Metro Justice members as well. You know, Metro Justice very much believes in expanding democracy in our city, in our country, and forums like this as an opportunity for folks to really hear where candidates stand is a critical part of that. I say "part of that," you know, we think that this is a part. You know, we dedicate ourselves as an organization to expanding that democracy, challenging and dismantling white supremacy, and dismantling wealth inequality within our community. These are the sort of core functions of who Metro Justice is and why we do the work that we do, and why it's so important to us that we think that folks really have an opportunity to hear directly from candidates, what they think, what they're planning to do, what kind of change they'd like to see in our community as folks that are going to have some degree of power within that community, and who, you know, will probably at some point be either meeting with us or on the receiving end of one of our protests. One way or the other, right? One thing I do want to say, though, is that in that ongoing movement work, one thing Metro Justice does not do is endorse candidates. So tonight, this isn't meant for us as a process of endorsement in any way. What we're interested in is an open dialogue. And in fact, I think not endorsing allows us to be a sort of good role in that space, right? But we do very much believe in open politics, and so that's why we're here. That's what we're interested in seeing is a real open and hopefully lively conversation about what needs to happen to improve our city school district, but also improve the city more generally. I'll shut up now because I want to introduce our esteemed moderator for the matter, Windsor Wade. Windsor, for those of you that don't know, and I imagine that that's actually relatively few people here, for those that don't know Windsor Wade, he's been a teacher at School Without Walls for over 30 years now. He's a rep in the Teachers Union, NICE, he's also a longtime member of Metro Justice, member of our council, and leader and chair of our Racial Justice Initiative. So without further ado, Windsor, if you want to take us away.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'd like to thank all of you who are here to hear this forum, and I'd like to thank the candidates who've come to express their viewpoints on a series of questions. And we're listening to people, and those two people are Van White and Cynthia Elliott. And I know where they are. They're at Franklin. There's a graduation ceremony there for kids who've gone through summer school. Now, the forum will consist of five questions, and they have 90 seconds, so it's very succinct to respond to them. After 30 seconds, you'll get a yellow card warning from our timekeeper, Edith, to erase that card. And the second card will be a red card, which means you have to stop talking. Okay? So, and after my five questions, you're going to get some questions from the youth organizers from Team Empowerment, and they are David Young, Shalanda Bowler, and Jakar Hill. Okay? So now, our first question, you have a microphone there? It should be hot? Oh, yes. And on your chairs, you'll find these white cards. Write down any question you'd like to ask the candidates, and after it's working, and they'll be collecting them for who passes up and I can ask the candidates questions. Okay, our first question. "Young black men are more likely to end up in prison than with a college degree. Harsh discipline policies reinforce structural racism and sustain the school-to-prison pipeline. What concrete steps will you take to break this unjust cycle?"
So, Beatrice Lebron, and I'll start. Actually, I was just talking about this today with Moses Robinson and some of the work that he's been doing, working in the criminal justice system right now, and working with judges to try to stop penalizing students who are getting, who are coming from traumatic backgrounds and are being charged when they act out because of that trauma. And so, he gave the example of a young girl who kind of went around and slapped people. And so, she would, you know, she was slapping people. Anytime she saw them, she would just slap them. And, you know, she ended up in family court. She was getting penalized for it, and what ended up finding, what they found out and they discovered was that she would be severely abused in her home. And so, when we don't address trauma and abuse in children, what ends up happening is that they end up through the criminal justice system because we penalize them for being, coming from a traumatic background. So something concrete that I told Moses today, whether I win or don't win, is that I actually want to be a part of that group that is leading that right now, so that we can change the criminal justice system and family court and how juveniles are being processed.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Golden. I think about the role that schools play, how the role that school systems play in the pipeline. And we have to review the policies that are in place and figure out which ones help to build the pipeline or help to deconstruct the pipeline and hold people accountable. There has been work done with the Code of Conduct this year. I think they, it's trying to address this inequality that is so present in our urban schools. As a board member, I would take an active role in helping to identify structural racism and also inform and educate all members of the school district about what it is and how we can work to dismantle it. The penal system is the penal system, and I believe we need to work on that. But my role as a board member would be to work on the school district to identify and deconstruct policies wherever their origin, and dismantle those that negatively impact our students, African-American males, females, Latinos, whoever it is. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Natalie Shepherd. So I think that we need more leaders in place that are going to take a direct service position. And so, I know as a school board commissioner, you know, one of our main roles is to make sure that the policies are in place and they're appropriate. But when we start talking about the school-to-prison pipeline, we need leaders that are going to be able to get down into the trenches and figure out where is this happening, like what is the route? So by that, I mean if we have commissioners who will go into the schools, talk to teachers, and figure out what is the disconnect, if we, if our students need more support in the classroom, what is going to keep our students engaged so that we are giving them a different track? If we want our kids to have an alternative than being out in the streets or doing something that we feel they shouldn't be doing in the community, we have to give them an appropriate opportunity and appropriate alternative, and that starts with them wanting to be in school, that starts with them wanting to learn, and that starts also with that direct service. We have to figure out, are they, do they want to have relationships with the teachers? Are the teachers afraid, or do the teachers need more help in regards to building those appropriate relationships with the students? Because that is the most important relationship, is teacher and student in that classroom, because that's what is going to keep the student engaged. That is where the teachers can learn if the student needs extra support or if the family needs anything. Also, as a commissioner, I do think that we need to be more in the community. We need to understand what community resources can help bring our families together, can help bring neighbors together, can really get the resources that our families need, oh, sorry, within their, within their structure.
Thank you for the responses. Question number two. "A recent report on special education in the Rochester City School District found a host of serious problems with school policy and procedure. At present, there are no written operating procedures for the Office of Special Education. How much of a priority is it for you to fix this?"
Well, first, I've got to get over the fact that there are no written operational policies. I think even special education, we can't talk about it without also talking about systemic racism and structural racism that exists in the city-school district. Children are classified that don't necessarily need to be classified. As a former educator and administrator in the district, I could tell you stories about that, some that would break your heart, and, but some that changed because I helped to declassify kids that should not have been classified. As a board member, I would absolutely support the superintendent and the work that she's doing to try to remedy this real cancerous sore that is permeating the district. It's impacting thousands of children, which is leading them to a life perhaps with no opportunities for employment, entrepreneurship, nor higher education. We have got to do better. When we introduced special education to the community at large about 40 years ago, we told parents that their children would, their children would do better. That has not been the case. It has become a holding ground for many with no real opportunities to escape. I hate to use that word, but that's the truth. Operating policies, we need, and we need to do a real review to make sure that whoever is classified is indeed supposed to be classified gets the help that they need.
So, special education is a very close subject to me. Right now, the way the district is working with special education, you know, I hate to say this, but it's doing a very terrible job in regards to identifying who needs actual support and who is being pushed into special education because of behavioral issues. And so, with that, I think that with, if we bring in the right policies, we can decide if a student just needs extra help, because sometimes students need extra help, they just don't get it in time. And so, if they do need extra help, then we should have regular education tutors, which is something that I would push for. And I don't think that we need to have extended day to have that happen, because I do think that kids need to be kids, and we should be able to teach them within the seven hours that they are there five days a week, because that's what teachers get paid to do. And so, I think that we should look at restructuring the schedules of the schools that we are liaisoned to as commissioners. And that would mean we would bring in regular tutors during the schedule, so those students that need extra help on supports, they can get that while they're at school. And then, those students who don't need extra support, we can utilize that time for something different. That means building a relationship with our community assets, so giving them volunteer opportunities. And so, I think that that would cut down a lot of mismanaging and misidentifying students going into special education if we're able to bring in regular education tutors during the school day to help them with the extra supports that they need.
And for me, I actually taught in the district as a long-term sub in special education and bilingual, and I worked with a mixed disability classroom, and so I worked with kids who were autistic, had Down syndrome, did not speak, were blind, hard of hearing. Tutoring is not going to work for those students, unfortunately. And not having, really not holding the schools accountable for their IEPs is really where I'm interested the most, because the IEP is put in place for a very specific reason, individually for that child. And I can tell you that I never saw a student's full IEP implemented in the district in three years that I worked there. And so, what I would do is I would talk with parents, and I would direct them right back through Empire Justice, and I would say, "Get a lawyer and fight the school district." And I shouldn't have had to do that, because families deserve their right to have their children come in, have the IEP, and have a school that has almost a billion dollars in resources, figure out a way to implement that IEP and provide those supports for those students. So I think when we talk about special education, there's two groups that are kind of being looked at in the district, and I think both need fundamentally different, have fundamentally different needs. But based on the students that I taught and the IEPs that they had, they're not being supported and they're not being implemented.
Thank you. Our next question is about charter schools. "Charter schools thung money away from public schools are many of our highest need learners. Performance records for charters are often unreliable as they don't serve the entire school population. How will you ensure that public schools are supported and properly funded?"
So that goes back to the reason why we need stronger advocates. We do have some strong advocates right now sitting on our school board, but a lot of our resources are going into salaries. And so, what that means is we need someone to advocate at the state level to bring in more money if there are services that we need. We also need advocates that are going to be able to connect with the community resources that we have with different organizations to bring in the supports that we need within our district. So I think that right now, our district should not be trying to do everything on its own and really utilize what is in our community to help us, because, you know, our students live within this community. And with charters, you know, what I will say is that we can do, we can do a lot better. If we start taking some of the innovative ideas that they have in charters and just putting them inside our public schools because we have the authority to do that, then I think that we, we would see less charters popping up all over the place, and then we wouldn't even have to have this discussion. But I do have a problem with saying that we should just shut down every charter school all at once, because we just don't have a better alternative at this point. And so, I think that if we build on our public education and make it stronger, then we won't have anything to worry about. And I am definitely committed to making our public education stronger.
Oh, so charters, this has literally had come up in designation in many forums, and here's where I stand with charters. I do, me and Natalie actually have very similar views. And so, if we strengthen public education, we wouldn't have a need for charter schools. But one thing I will never do is I will never fault a family for choosing charter if they believe that that's a better alternative for their student. And that's the part that people tend to forget in this fight of public versus charter, that there's still our children in this community, there's still our families, there's still our neighbors, there's still our friends. And so, they're seeking the best possible alternatives and options for their family. I will never judge a family and tell them that they made the wrong decision because they tried to go charter route, private school or private. If they can afford it, that's, you know, great for them. I can't afford it, I have three girls, I can't afford it. But what I will do is fight with every being in my fiber for public schools to strengthen this school district in this city. My children go, went through, I have two kids that went through the district, and I still have one that's in first grade. And so, I am invested into the district, I'm invested in living in the city of Rochester, and I'll never give up fighting for public education, but I will not judge families for choosing what they believe is the best alternative.
Thanks. I'm going to stand up because I can't see the folks in the back, and you can't see me. One thing that Mr. Wade said, and I hope we all heard it, is that we don't even know whether or not the data is accurate. Charter schools have these positive reputations because they're out there continually advertising and telling their story. The school district has to do a better job of telling its story. There are wonderful programs going on in the school district, we need to replicate those. The charter school law is what dictates how the monies follow the children. So there's, only way we can change that is to try to change the law. In the meantime, we must improve what it is we do and how we communicate it to our communities. Families are choosing elsewhere because they believe it's better. Unfortunately, some of those families will find out that they are not better. We have seen that in the school district before, where we had like seven schools, charter schools had to close because they were doing worse than the Rochester City School District, and then the district was left trying to improve what had been lost by those students. We have work to do in this district, and one of those is, as I said, to tell our story, to be much more forthright, to bring our parents in so that they can be the ambassadors, because families who are happy will tell others about their happiness. So that's what I would say about that, and yes, we do have to strengthen ours, what we do. Thank you.
Our next question. "Less than 20% of kids who live in the city attend the school as closest to them. This can destabilize communities when children in the same neighborhoods are not attending the same schools. If the community calls for return to neighborhood schools, would you support this?"
I am an advocate for neighborhood schools. I just am. I'm a member of one of the committees in the city, a school district around neighborhood schools, and one of the parents said it so well. She said that busing has helped to disintegrate our communities. And when I thought about myself, living on Columbia Avenue, walking to school 19 with my friends, and my friends became my parents' friends, their parents became friends and were lifelong friends, when you have 12 houses on a block and you've got 10 school buses showing up, kids don't get to know each other, parents don't get to know other parents, it's helping to divide, destroy our community. Rochester has to address the building of our communities. We build communities stronger by making our schools stronger. We can do that through neighborhood schools, and we can also do that by ensuring that they have the facilities, the, the, not facilities, but the ability to serve what the needs of the families and the children are. So community schools, where there are medical facilities associated, dental, whatever it is that are needed in certain communities, we make sure that they're there. But neighborhood schools, we can do that, and we can do that with a different kind of busing. I guess it's walking buses or whatever we need to do. But I believe this community wants that, and we can make that happen. Thank you.
So I think that we should definitely move in that direction as well, but we have to be careful, and we have to identify what each neighborhood needs. There is, right now, you know, we do have a gang issue that happens based on the size of our community. And so, when we go back to neighborhood schools, the district has to really make sure that we are working with those community resources. I say "community" a lot in all of my answers, because that's really what it's going to take. The issue that is happening with the violence in our communities, we have to understand that going back to neighborhood schools is great, but then we also have to go further than that and realize what's happening around those buildings. We need to work to make sure that there are organizations or that there are resources that are going to be able to address those things as well. Because I know that when we went away from neighborhood schools, some of the ideas was that we would break up some of that gang activity, get people, get students integrated with one another from across the cities, across the city on in different neighborhoods, because one child that grows up on the west side may never ever see the east side, and that's a problem. And so, if we do go back to neighborhood schools, we also need to make sure that every volunteer opportunity that we have, we're taking kids out into the community of Rochester, so that when they get out of here, out of Rochester, they're not saying, "Oh, I'm from the east side." Nobody knows what that means. I tell my kids that all the time, but I work with, like, "What are you talking about? You're from Rochester, and so you need to understand the full area of your..."
West side, west side. That's right. Oh, God, Natalie, let me go. So, same thing, so interesting, I came home the other day, and there was about like 15 to 16 kids that kind of all played in my neighborhood, lived right on the west side, right off West Main on Cunningham, off of Troop Street, and they're always out there playing. And so, I decided to ask them, "Hey, you guys getting ready for school? What school you go to?" Every school, every student went to a different school, even a different school from my own daughter. And I was like, I'm like, "Don't you guys want to be in the same school?" And they were like, "No, we actually like, and we get to come home and hang out and have different friends." But that's not, but I really did feel a sense of kind of sadness, because we all, we literally, we live like next to each other, we're kind of like, kind of like Philadelphia style, town row houses. But, so here's what my belief on neighborhood schools, they're great, but the reality is we're also winter-heavy, and so we have to, we have to have a plan for parents who have to walk 1.4, 5 miles. That was me. I was a parent that lived 1.5 miles from my school, and I had to walk my kids in the winter and walk them back because the bus stop was in front of my house. So yes, I want to support neighborhood schools, but I also am very conscious about all the families that that will impact. The other piece is that, yeah, we want neighborhood schools, and we want resources in them, and we have to have them. But I work at Rochester Regional Health, and I can tell you guys that the health center and the dental is not connecting with school 17, and there is a problem there that needs to be addressed. Sorry, I went over, guys.
Thank you. The next question, which is also about community schools. "Community schools provide critical wraparound services such as healthcare and job training to parents and students in underserved neighborhoods. How do you plan on increasing the number of community schools in the city school district?"
I don't know, maybe I'll go. I don't know, I don't know. Let's see. I, I think that the plan we have now is a good one, where we're doing it in phases, doing it school by school to see if it's working. Again, we have different neighborhoods that have different needs, so I wouldn't want to say, "Let's just jump into having a community school here," if I know we haven't set up the right resources for that actual neighborhood. And so, you know, I would work again with the community, I would work with the city, you know, I would work with my colleagues to figure out in what phases and what schools should we start doing groups and trying it here. If it was successful, then we should do it here, and I do think that we should go step by step with that, and we shouldn't rush into just having our whole district immediately turn into a community, community school district, yeah?
Sorry, guys, we're trying to... So kind of back to community schools, we were talking about this. So back to school 17, so that's one of the schools I actually started at. So school 17, Rochester Regional Health is there, we have a health center, and actually, 80% of the patients that we see there are adults, 80%. So even though we're in a school, we're not even seeing children that often. We didn't even have a pediatrician there until this year. So when we talk about the community schools, neighborhood schools, and having these supports and these resources, we have to make sure that they make sense and that they really align with the goals of what we're trying to accomplish. It bothers my mind that we have a primary care doctor, but we didn't have a family medicine doctor there or a pediatrician. The other piece of it is that even though we put a pediatrician this year in school 17, we have not touched or moved the immunization records or physicals for students or access to primary care or pediatrician care for students. That to me is insanity. We're just kind of like saying, "We're going to have a community school or neighborhood school, we're going to put it together, we're going to create the shell of it, but we're not going to think through the logistics and the strategies to ensure that we're connected." So one thing that I'm going to be doing after September 13, that's the date I gave the hospital, is looking at ways to go back to Orchard Street and getting the practice there, all the staff there, to reconnect with the school. Some way, somehow, we have to make sure that that connection is there, so that parents know that if their children need a pediatrician, they're right there, they're right next door. You need a dentist appointment, they're right next door with Eastman Dental.
So my question is, what happened? We had community schools when I was chief academic officer at school number two at Jefferson. We have a memorandum of agreements with several health facilities. So I would want to sit down and work with the strategic partners to find out what happened. The business world is like this, guys, what's in it for me, right? We know what we want, but we have to figure out what it is they want and make sure that we honor whatever that relationship is. And I believe for some reason or not, or another, we, the ball got dropped or the relationships got severed. You build relationships, and then you talk about increasing what it is you want, and that is community schools. Many of our communities need it. Without these facilities, these, these healthcare opportunities associated with schools, our children will not get there. Children who are hurting, toothaches, whatever it is, cannot learn. So we know that if a child is in pain, they can't learn optimally. We, as a school district, must make this a priority because we know it's going to help us reach our goals, and it will also help the healthcare, because they're going to get paid for all the children that they serve, children and families. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness, they hand you the mic as soon as you sit down. I want to pose a question they just answered to you. Okay, all right, fair enough. Actually, the one before, they just responded to it. "Less than 20% of kids who live in the city attend the school as closest to them. This can destabilize communities when children in the same..." This can destabilize communities when children in the same neighborhoods are not attending the same schools.
At the community hall, where I was, and I, I know you appreciate this...
We already know.
I'm gonna tell you myself, I'm gonna be my own witness. And, and you guys don't know what I know. Uh, it was a beautiful ceremony, uh, Dr. Hallmark was there, it was a beautiful ceremony at Ben Franklin High School. It was our summer school graduation. I can tell you, uh, years ago, um, there was no recognition of kids that graduated during the summer months. I got a letter from some grandmothers who were from Florida, and said they had experienced that in Florida, and wanted, this is probably about, just as I got it in Florida, they wanted to experience that, they sent me a copy of a letter, we started off at, uh, at, I think it was School, uh, School of the Arts, and it was probably, I would say, 20 people there at the most. Ninety seconds, that's alright? Well, that's how I'll answer it. I, I will tell you, I do support neighborhood schools. Well, let me finish my answer. My answer was, there was well over 200 and something graduates today. So let's give our families, our students, a round of applause. Yes, I do support neighborhood schools, but it's gotta be the right conditions. Um, to, to relegate people to neighborhood schools right now would be immensely unfair, because we have some neighborhoods that have a low number of good performing schools. I think our neighborhoods have to be ready, I think our schools have to provide an adequate choice for every neighborhood child, otherwise, it's inequitable, it's not fair. We have to work on making sure there's at least two, three good schools in every neighborhood. Got us?
Can I say something? So I, I guess I'm a little concerned as a parent, because there's a difference between neighborhood schools and community schools. And I think that our leaders should know the difference. Because for me, as a black parent, neighborhood school sounds like segregation. Community schools, we have 17 as a community school, so I'm, I'm really, really concerned about that. So I don't know if I'm misunderstanding, and as a parent, I'd like to understand the difference, or is there a difference?
I'd like to hear everyone respond to that question? Or that, or that concern?
I, I don't know if that was a response to one, I said, "Maybe I..."
No, no, just listening, yeah.
You are absolutely right, there's a difference between neighborhood schools and community schools. Community schools is an approach to how you educate kids, you engage different agencies and people to come and surround and embrace a child and the children. It could be a psychologist, it could be a teacher, it could be a, a baker, it could be anybody who can help that child get across that finish line and deal with the challenges that they have. A neighborhood school, as I understand it, is almost a, it, it is a geographic approach. Some people say, say that because you have a neighborhood school, it embraces a neighborhood and, and, and makes people connected to the school. But there's a difference between the two. In some neighborhoods, we have neighborhood schools, we have community schools, we have several community schools. The question is, are we going to develop neighborhood schools? And by the way, the Board of Education very recently said, "We are going to have a neighborhood school." It's basically a placement decision. It's saying, "If you live in this particular catchment area, this school you're gonna go to." We recently made that decision at Number 17, and we made that decision with respect to 33 and East High School. Sorry for taking your time.
Would the other person like to respond to that?
Are we able to, like, speak out?
Yeah, I, can we just, I think he, for, for right now...
He kind of didn't answer the question, you know? He kind of went around it, we really didn't find the difference between the community schools and neighborhood schools.
Oh, I think I did.
Okay, so I'll...
So, go ahead and respond to that concern.
So, um, as, um, Commissioner White said, the community schools provide support to students which, in whatever school they are, regardless of where they live, right? A neighborhood school would be the closest school to where you live, and you go there, right? So if I'm on Columbia Avenue, I go to School 19, or if I'm on the other part of Columbia, I'm at School Number Two. But going back to your, um, concern or question about segregation, busing was instituted to desegregate schools when the city had more of a diverse population, meaning many more white students living in the city going to the schools than they do right now. So we bust schools, but they do not bust students, but they do not desegregate schools, because there aren't enough white students there. So, when we talk about segregation, though, we have to look at our city and housing patterns. School districts can't fix that. And I believe that we have not invested the same level of resources into all of our schools. I'm not going to stand up in a public forum and say that we're supposed to, we should have two or three good schools in every community. I want every school to meet a quality standard, and we should fund them according to what the needs are, right? Equitable funding is what we're looking for. A, a school with, am I going too long with it? A school with, um, a significant number of students who are classified as special education need a different level of funding. A school with English language learners, students who don't speak English and need additional support, need additional funding. So, but all schools have to have a quality standard. A fourth grade student, um, should have the same kind of work expected of her or him, um, at School 19 as they do at School 46. How do you do that? You do that by reviewing student work. We, I, as a board member, I would advance, promote the review, peer review of student work. That tells us volumes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not really respond to the questions, uh, that were asked when he wasn't here. Okay, there's a second part to that question you just asked about community schools. Community schools provide critical wraparound services such as healthcare and job training to parents and students in underserved neighborhoods. How do you plan on increasing the number of community schools in the city school district?
Well, uh, let me just say, Cecilia misunderstood my statement. I wasn't saying that we should have good schools in every district. The fact is, though, the reality is, we cannot afford right now to give social workers that are needed, develop the kind of partnerships that are needed in every school in every community. So I, when I said two or three, I said, "You cannot start..." I do not believe it is fair to start a neighborhood-based approach, saying, "If you live in this neighborhood, you gotta go to these particular schools." Unless you at least have two or three schools, so that you're not saying to people in certain neighborhoods, "You're gonna go and, and, and be educated in a neighborhood, no matter how bad all the schools are." So I wasn't saying, "Oh, every school should not be a good school." Absolutely should. But the reality is, we can't start off that way. We can at least guarantee every neighborhood resident a decent school or two in their neighborhood. So, on the issue of community schools, um, it, it's gonna be tough to have community schools in every school. It takes effort, it takes time to put together, it takes planning to put together, and it takes partners, um, to put together what they put together at Number 17 School, and all the partnerships there, at East High School. It takes time, it takes effort, and if you don't do it right, you're just doing it by name. Anybody can say, "Hey, let's have a community school," it's a community school. But it has to be planned, people have to make commitments. Sometimes those commitments are made voluntarily, and sometimes they need additional funds.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question for you. Young black men are more likely to end up in prison than with a college degree. Harsh discipline policies reinforce structural racism and sustain the school and prison pipeline. What concrete steps would you take to break this unjust cycle?
Well, I think, um, again, given the limitation of time, and maybe people might want to ask follow-up questions, I think the Board of Education has taken some serious steps, going back to about three years ago, when I was on DCS, and somebody called and said, "My son has been suspended." And I said, "Well, did you appeal it?" He said, "No, why would I appeal it?" And I said, "Because you should have gotten a letter that said you had the right to appeal." For decades, the district was not even informing parents if they had the right to appeal the suspension decisions. We, the Board of Education, immediately asked, "I want to go 10 years back and see how many letters you've sent out." They hadn't sent out a single letter informing parents. The Board of Education changed that, we hired someone to assist the board in appealing and understanding the appellate process. On top of that, the code of conduct has been revised, we have a lot of people in this room to thank for that. That is, in fact, stopping the prison, uh, the, the school and prison pipeline. I, as a prosecutor, I, as a defense attorney, have seen that. I've seen, I've seen what many of you probably haven't even seen, people spent their life in prison, wrongly accused. So I think I have a firsthand knowledge about what that prisoner pipeline does. I've seen it in the courtroom, and I've seen it in the classroom, and I've stopped it to the extent I can in both contexts.
Thank you. Next question. A recent report on special education in the city school district found a host of serious problems with school policy and procedure. At present, there are no written operating procedures for the Office of Special Education. How much of a priority is it for you to fix this?
Well, it's a major priority, but, but there are policies, and, and there are laws. The problem is, to be quite honest, they haven't been followed. And, and I gotta tell you, this is not unique to Rochester, fortunately. I, I worked as an intern in the Assembly in the 1980s with the Committee on Children and Families, and I did a report on disproportionality. So this topic has been a part of my existence since I was a young kid. Um, but, the, the truth be told, anybody who's been in this business for years and understood what's going on, this has been happening to black boys and brown boys for decades, and it's a particular problem in our district. Um, we have a superintendent who actually has experience in special education, that's a plus for us. We have, uh, uh, staff members who are being reorganized now with the superintendent's emphasis on equity and appropriate placement. It's gonna take time. Um, do I have a commitment to this? Yes, but I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not something that I think we're gonna see immediate results in. And, and I want to say something that I've said typically, repeatedly, if we think one superintendent is gonna fix this, because, you know, by the way, we had another superintendent who upended the apple cart, who totally upended special education, um, went to the I-COT model. This was just, y'all know, this was just a year ago. People have tried, it has not worked. I think now with the leadership that we have in Barbara Dean Williams, a former special education instructor, I think we will get some focus on that now.
Your last question about charter schools. Charter schools funnel money away from public schools and any of our highest need learners. Performance records for charters are often unreliable, as they don't serve the entire school population. How will you ensure that public schools are supported and properly funded?
Well, I, I tell folks, you know, we have to compete with these charter schools, they are here to stay. Board members are making the decision to open up more charter schools. That's your New York State Assembly, they're making those decisions. So what do we do in response to that? We have to have better schools, we have to really work our butts off to make sure that parents have good choices, because otherwise, parents aren't gonna do what we want them to do, which is stay in this district. So one of the things that the Board of Education's done is, of course, we've gotten competitive, we've gotten, uh, our graduation rate, while it's been increasing very slowly, it's been increasing, um, not so happy, no one's feeling good about the ELA and MATH scores, but we continue to work on those. We continue to develop models that people are interested in. 17 School was a community school, people are talking about that. I hope it's, it's a successful model, but we're tweaking it, we're working hard to make it better. Board of Education just made a serious goal, a lot of people weren't happy about it. We decided to make it a neighborhood school, and to make sure that it was appropriately resourced, community school at the same time. Um, East High School, I know a lot of people think we've invested a lot of money in it, but it's giving people a choice. Do you know, before we made the arrangement to have East High School be managed by the University of Rochester, it was the number three choice in 90% of the time. The year that they took over, it became the number one choice in 85% of the time. They increased their graduation rate by eight percentage points. Now, is that the promised land? No, but we're making progress, and parents need to see progress if you're, if we're gonna compete with these charter schools.
Okay, thank you. Now, the second half of our forum, uh, will be questions from the youth organizers from Teen Empowerment, um, Davion Leslie, Shalinda Bowler, and Jacarl Hill. So please come up and address the questions to the panel.
Uh, so I'm gonna be the prelude, and then let my young protege ask the question. Uh, oh, I'm Jacarl Hill, uh, former graduate, former graduate of Rochester Early College International High School, two years ago, you don't have to dig it. Um, so for three years, close to when I graduated, we have been working as part of a community district effort, we call it Solutions, Non-Suspensions, and also the Community Task Force for School Climate. We've made a lot of headway with the new Code of Conduct that is focused on teaching, growth, problem-solving, rather than pushing students away from learning in school, and also several initiatives that are aimed at creating stronger school communities. But to really take hold, they need the long-term, active support of the board and leadership in the entire community, including students and parents.
Hi, I'm Shalinda Bowler, um, I'm a youth organizer at Teen Empowerment, and I am a graduate also from Rochester Early College International High School. Um, so my question is, um, students have perspectives and ideas that the district absolutely needs in order to help students succeed, and I don't think anyone disagrees with that philosophically. But the question is, how will we commit to actually put student voice into action? And a few things, I'm gonna say a few things before, um, you guys answer it. So as students, besides the focus groups that we did, which is 400 out of 30,000-plus students, we never saw widespread efforts that get and actually use student feedback. We only heard through doing this work that there is a Student Leadership Congress in the district, but it is practically invisible, and that has not been working on changing policy. And only a few schools have meaningful ways of engaging students to help create a vibe in their schools that motivates them to attend daily. So here again is your question. In what areas of decision-making will you incorporate student voice, and how? And how will you put your active support behind making sure student voice is heard and acted upon on all levels of the district ongoing?
No, he won't, no, I'm serious. Oh, I can go, sorry, you guys, we're trying to figure out which order. Van doesn't want to go first, he's like, he's done, pass him right now. Um, so first and foremost, um, you know, I had two kids in the district that are now in college, they're 19, both 19, one's gonna be 20. Um, and they were very vocal, because I was very vocal as a parent, so they went to their school, and they felt like, "We're gonna be heard, and we're not liking something." They were actively involved. Um, my daughter was like the president of the Gandhi group that was at Northeast, Northwest College Prep. Um, I also coordinate children's leadership program. Um, so fundamentally, I believe that children should absolutely have a voice in every part of their life, which really breaks tradition from a lot of black and brown families. We kind of feel like, "You don't have a choice," or, "My house, what I say goes." Um, but I do believe that children are more than capable, once they've managed language, to speak and tell you what they want, what they don't want. Um, even at two, and they, all they can say is "No," and they, you know, they don't want to eat. Um, and we as adults, we have to stop ignoring the children's voices and teens' voices. Um, because again, you only know what you're kind of going through, and why you're thinking that you don't want to be involved in something, or do want to be involved, or the choices that you make. Um, I'm a very people-centered person, so how will I ensure that the children's voices? I think that the children should be involved in every committee that the board has. I think that the board should be more engaged in the schools, so that they have access, and children have access to who the board members are, so that their voices can be heard. Um, if I'm elected, that's gonna be one of my focuses, is absolutely to have children engagement, family engagement. It's, it's actually the biggest thing that I'm focusing on, on my platform, is that family engagement piece. And let me tell you guys, it's gonna take a lot of hard work, but the only way to truly engage families in this district is we have to go to, to their house. We cannot expect families to come to the school, and we're gonna catch them, and catch who we can, and engage them. We really have to, as not only board members, school lunch folks, other students, staff, faculty, teachers, we have to create a strategic plan to do that outreach, and get out of the school building, and into the communities, and meet our families, and see where they're at, and see how we can support them.
Thanks for the question, Shalinda. I truly believe in student voice, but I believe in student voice. It shouldn't be up to who believes in it and who doesn't, right? School leaders, building principals, um, will not change behaviors if there isn't a reason to do so, meaning ways to incorporate student voice in a formal way. So I would look to do it through policy, though I don't like to have to do policies all the time. And as someone earlier said, we have all of these policies, but the implementation is not there. So it would be something, I think about college students, um, when the professors are evaluated, there is a survey of the students, asking how well they think the professor engaged with them, how much they learned, how, you know, effective was the teaching and all of that. I think if we work with the teachers' union, because this would be an issue that would have to be taken with the teachers' union, to make sure that the rights of teachers were not violated, um, but we have to figure out a way so that it would be across the board, um, either through surveys or something. Student councils, absolutely. But again, it depends on the school, and it shouldn't. That is something that helps to build leadership in our young people at the elementary, middle, and high school. Every school in which I worked, there was a student council, didn't matter if it was elementary or not, because kids do have a voice. And when they feel engaged, they take, they, they have more of a buy-in and ownership of what goes on. We have school-based planning teams in the Rochester City School District. There is an opportunity for, for students to participate... There is an opportunity for students to participate on the school-based planning teams. As a board member, I would ask schools, where's your student voice here? What are your students saying? And if that's not happening, the school leaders, school building leaders have to be held accountable. But absolutely, I think student voice is probably one of the key answers we have to improving our schools in the Rochester City School District. Thank you.
So for me, you know, since day one, I've been saying that the first thing that I would do coming in is go straight to the schools and learn my students and build a direct relationship with them. And that is because students need to understand certain things and what you're really asking for and how you need to ask for it. And you know, it goes step by step so that you actually get understanding of how everything works in the district, so that you'll have leverage when you're going to ask for things, then you will get something in return. Because we don't just want something set up just to say we have it set up. That's what we are, we're good for doing that as a district. And so with that, I would say that leadership really sets the tone for what's happening in the district. And so us as commissioners, we have a certain amount of schools that we are liaisoned to. And there's no reason why we don't understand what our students in our assigned schools want. If it has been something that you've wanted for years, we can go into, I will put money on this. I'm not a betting person, but I'll put money on it. That we can go into 10 schools and ask this student, who is the commissioner of this school? And they won't know. They won't even know what a commissioner is, right? And so at a former forum, we were asked, you know, would you support a policy with commissioners going into schools? Because what that does is, it helps you to build a relationship. You can't build a relationship if you're not there. We can't just say that we're gonna do everything through policies. We can't say that we as commissioners are gonna do everything through the administration. If we are acting like we are too good to build a direct relationship with students, what are our administrators gonna do? What are our teachers gonna do? And so we really have to get down, again, into building direct relationships with those we're service. I mean, it is a part-time position, but I do think that our students are worth it. I mean, I don't understand why you would come and wanna be a commissioner on a school board if you don't wanna talk to students. So that is what I would say. I would come down to really engage students and really let them know when you're setting up student governments, how to go about getting the things that you actually want so it's not just a format.
Thank you for giving, I'm gonna just catch my breath. The first thing is, there is a role for the board, and we have advisory councils. And I think since I've been blessed with the opportunity to be president, we probably have put more young people who are in our schools on advisory councils than any past president has ever done before. Does it always yield positive results? No, because sometimes people have people in front of them and they don't listen. So, but they're there. Could we do other things that put them in a place where they could be heard? Like I like your idea about putting them on committees. There's nothing that would prevent us from doing that. I think there might be some legality, some legal issues about putting them on school-based planning issues. But I think there's more we can do. I think there's more we can do. And any leader who doesn't acknowledge that is not really a leader. I also wanna tell you that I go into the schools more than anybody could ever imagine. I read to kids, I listen to kids. But, and I know no one is saying anything to kind of this, but this is not where our kids are. 85% of our kids, their time is spent outside of school. So I spend time in prisons, jails, not just as clients, but talking to them about where they wanna be. Why did they drop out of school? I spend time with them in the courtroom. I spend time with them in the classroom. Because this is where I spend time with them in their homes. I've gone on these attendance blitzes. Yeah, it's good to be in the classroom, but you gotta knock on doors where the kids are at and talk to their parents. So I think it's important to be in the classroom, but there are so many other places that our children are, that our young folks are, where their lives are being impacted. I think a commissioner who really wants to get to know the kids is not just gonna be in the classroom. And by the way, if they don't know me as Commissioner White, I don't care. That's not important. They should just know me, and I think everybody's saying this, they should just know me as a person who cares. And if I come to the jailhouse, if I come to the courthouse, if I come to break bread with them, if I come and ask their daddy, why didn't you let me through your son in school? And the dad looks at this kid and he says, wait a second, I thought you were in school. Right? That's keeping it real. That's having a conversation with kids that I think we all endorse and support.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me right? My name is Davion Leslie. I'm a first-year youth organizer at Teen Empowerment. And the question I have for you guys is, hold on a second. A major team that came out of our focus groups with 400 Rochester City School districts is the need to see ourselves in our curriculum and to feel that we are valued and treated fairly. In your view, what impact does culturally responsive learning have on, has on student engagement? Also, what specific measures would you support to assure that our curriculum is culturally responsive, including Pan-African Studies at all grade numbers? And that our teachers and school staff are prepared to infuse it throughout the district?
Having a curriculum that reflects the students who sit in those seats, culturally responsive curriculum is critically important. It is the beginning of a student's learning about loving oneself. We know that before one can learn about others, one should first learn about himself, herself. African roots, Latino roots, whatever they are, they need to do that. Because without that knowledge, one begins to believe that they don't have anything to offer. And they do, and have always had something to offer. So one thing I would support would be the curriculum writing. Culturally competent, infused curriculum, which has already been started, initiated by one of the board members who's here today, Mary Adams, beginning at grades K and going up through two, and I think eventually going to five. But we can do it that way, and then we've gotta also go to the high school levels. We have to be very careful about the books that we adopt, because if children don't see themselves in a positive way, and I'm not meaning to call you children, sorry, but I got kids. That they just don't have the interest. So the district has to be much more attentive and focused on the demographics, the children who sit before them. And we have to provide professional development, meaningful, ongoing professional development to the teachers and school administrators who are in charge of the education of our young people. I believe that we get the best results, the research supports. You get the best results in a classroom when you begin with what children already know and can do. We need to have the rhythms in that classroom, the songs that we know in that classroom, the ability to turn a math problem into a rap, if that's what it is, the poetry. Our kids are brilliant. To turn the schools around, I might be naive, Mr. White, but I don't think it's that hard. We just have to go and be committed and really believe in the kids that sit before us. Kids have three basic questions. Do you care about me? Can I trust you? And can I expect excellence from you every day? We have to provide those three basic answers to each and every kid, no matter what school they attend. So absolutely. Thank you for the question.
So for me, I think that with our students, that our class will be waiting another 12 years if we're going to be waiting for that. And I think it's that important that our students start learning about themselves today. And we can adopt that for different demographics of our school.
And I also agree with Natalie in that sense that, so there's many ways to skin a cat. There's the same. And so I do think that this topic has come up multiple times. And I promise you, I've been hearing this for the last 10 years, that we need, you know, an African-American Studies curriculum in the district. And then they try to implement it, and then they didn't fund it and they didn't support it. But they say that it's there. And so it's a waste, it's been literally a waste of time, energy, resources, and for the people who implemented it, unfortunately. But what I would say is not just the Pan-African, there's also a miseducation of Latinos too, who don't understand that they're also connected back. Their roots go right back to Pan-African as well. And because of that miseducation, as you know, in the district, Hispanic students and black students have a lot of cultural issues, which is my Bible to me, because I'm not originally from here. Where I grew up, we all grew up together. We all stayed building, stayed black. And so what happens here is that we're segregated. And so because of that segregation and that lack of education on where people originally come from and our history, we tend to have like racial wars between blacks and browns, which is insane to me. And so speaking of many ways to skin a cat, I think that there are opportunities to have folks come in to teach those courses, make it part of extended learning, make it part of a parent and a child. There's a lot of parents that don't understand the history that they come from. And so it's not even something that they can give their child, because they themselves don't know. And so I think there's ways, many different opportunities that this can be addressed within the district that probably has not been lived at or implemented at this point. But I do think it's possible, and I think anything's possible if we work towards it, so.
This has been one of the greatest challenges of our district. And just to correct Dr. Goodwin, in 2008, this is how far back it goes. In 2008, I introduced us, within a year of beginning on the school board, a resolution that is still in existence today. It created the Department of African, African-American Studies. But as Mary will tell you, we've had to go back at it over and over again and not getting any personnel reasons. But one of the frustrations that I had with our prior superintendent is, and I gotta be limited in what I can say, but the implementation was not there. Staffing was not happening. And so on that point, there's some progress that can be made. And we're just about to hire, once again, our last director of African, African-American Studies was Jenga St. Louis. She did a great job, but she was frustrated, like her predecessors. We've had this position filled. Hasn't been filled for the last six, seven months or so. And that's been really frustrating for the board. I think it's been a little bit longer than that. Been a little bit longer than that. But, and I can't get into details, but you realize, you realize, again, let me repeat, this was a resolution that I had established. Now, a good leader understands when he's not making progress, when the board at which he's not making progress, because that's how you make progress. You acknowledge the lack of progress. We're working on that. Now, one of the things that is happening now is Dr. Susan Goodwin, who is a wonderful resource, they've been in two different silos. She does the Rochester Teachers Association stuff, and she's at her silo for years. And then we had our instructors in their silo, and they weren't working together. Well, now that has changed. There's now a direct effort to work with Dr. Goodwin to infuse that curriculum and get professional development for our teachers. We also have done some cultural training for our teachers and for folks at Central Office. So I think we've made some progress there. But I wanna get back to this point about y'all wanna debate, style debate. I'll respond to some of Cecilia's. It is tough to turn around schools. I'm gonna just keep it real with you. If that means you're not gonna vote for me, then don't vote for me. It is tough work. It does not happen overnight. It does not happen overnight. Now, when I got sworn in at number 50 school, the graduation rate was 30%. It is now just hovering above 50. Is that something to begin champagne and pork? No. Some of these folks are gonna join us. And I think what they, if they don't already know it, and I think they do, they will learn. And I think they know this. And if you don't know this, you'll learn this. And I see a lot of familiar faces. It is tough work. And it's not because Mary hasn't tried, it's not because Dr. Hallmark hasn't tried. It won't be because the graduation rate is up to 75% when you, two years after you get in there. It won't be because none of you tried. I know you tried. I know you have all ideas. But it is tough work, and we have to be honest about that. No one here, no one here is gonna turn this thing around overnight. I wish that were so, I really do. But that's just not the case. It requires commitment, day and night. You lose hair, you lose sleep, but you stick with it. And that's what we've done.
Has anyone had a chance to smile like this?
I do. Thank you. Absolutely hard work, but not impossible.
No, no, no.
Now, now, wait a minute. I'm talking to you about what I know, what I have done. At school 39, we turned around that school through math, science, and technology. It cost money. We secured $250,000 over three years from a New York State Systemic Initiative grant. But in that process, every classroom was alive. Every child was engaged. Students who had historically had been previously classified as special education were declassified. Why? Because they were doing things with their hands. In many cases, they were doing better than kids who were not classified, building structures, understanding the strength of the triangle, doing inquiry-based learning. So yes, it is hard going to do without 100%. I had 100% of the teachers and teaching assistants say, yes, we're going to do this. And when it got tough and they wanted to, you know, back out as both of the other schools did, 50, I can't remember, 43 and another one, they didn't continue because it got hard. But we did, and we turned it around. So that, I'm telling you, we can do it. And yeah, it's hard work, but we're giving it too much time. I have a sense of urgency about this, and I've always had a sense of urgency, and I don't apologize for it. Thank you.
Can you provide examples of how you've contributed to and participated in your community in the greater Rochester community? Try to keep it in 90 seconds.
Yep, yep, I'll start. And I just wanna say, Cecilia, with all due respect, like the time that you talk about is like 1990s, and we're in 2017, and we're fundamentally in a different universe and a different world. And I just respectfully, I have to tell you, I do agree, it is a lot of hard work. But if anybody's running and thinks that it's not hard work, then they shouldn't be running, because that's just what it is at this point. So, well, I would say, I've worked all over this community, and I've served on many boards. I've been on the CASA Board, which is Child Acquainted Special Advocates. I did AmeriCorps, I've worked at Alternatives for Battered Women. I've worked at Community Place as a wellness coordinator. I've worked at WTKX. And I've worked all over this community. All of my last, the last 17 years of my adult life in Rochester have been dedicated to providing direct service in the community to the highest, most vulnerable populations. And so my entire existence in Rochester, from 19 to now, has all been about community work. I've never accepted a job to accept a job for money. If I felt that I went to an agency and they were doing something that was being more unethical or I viewed an unethical, I left that job. I didn't agree with it, I would not stay. I also worked at Malita House, which was the only teen shelter that we had for single teen moms. I started a program called Nurture Communities, which is for first-time mothers who are on social services. We provided them the opportunity to get their associate's degrees to MCC, get in child development, work upstairs with work-study, and watch their children downstairs. And moms would take turns. So I have a long history in Rochester as a community advocate and working in the community.
I like listening to these answers because at least two people, perhaps many is three, if I'm fortunate still and I'll be on the board, I'll be working with two people who are different. And it's good to hear, because the reality is, none of us have the entire package. And you need seven people, often say, operating at seven different pistons on an engine to work together. So when she describes her background, that's not my background. And that adds value. Mary is a research nurse, that's not my background. Dr. Hallmark is a professor. Malik is a banker. That adds value. So I very much look forward to the experiences of others and hearing about them. But in terms of my experience, I've done everything that you could imagine. I've opened up, and not necessarily with organizations, I've opened up a safe house on Culture Street when Jamal Alexander was killed there in the early 90s, because I wanted the community. I didn't go to Bayton, I didn't go to Urban League. I created my own safe house, paid my own rent by delivering newspapers in the morning, working my job at night so that kids in that community could have a safe community. I've mentored people in formal programs, like the Urban League, Boy Scouts of America. But I think where I might add value to my potential colleagues here is my experience in the courtroom. And it's not just, yeah, I was a former prosecutor years ago. I probably kept more people out of jail than I put in jail. But as a defense attorney and a civil rights attorney, I have a very unique perspective. Leaders have to respect the experiences of others. And my experience in the courtroom has taught me a lot, not only about criminal cases, but civil cases. And let me tell you something. I've worked with people, most of the time, who ain't got no money. So I know the challenges that family members have. The families, you mom, that got arrested because they let their children stick around. So the courtroom has provided some experience as well. Thank you.
So I am from Rochester. And before I left Rochester, I was on the Urban League Rochester Board of Directors. I was on the Hillside Board of Directors, where I am now Executive Director of Education. And I continue to transform schools, Beatrice. So it's not just my work that I did in the district. I have continued to do work, and as of right now, I'm changing six schools as we speak. I am a member of the Strong Museum Board of I am a member of the Strong Museum Board of Trustees and recently rotated off of the ABC Policy Council. I have tutored children in the community and am co-founder of the Phyllis Weekly Literary Circle that started at the Phyllis Weekly Library and now we meet at the Beowulf Center. So then, the board does have diversity. But what it's missing is a pre-K through 12 educator, right? And that's the perspective that I would bring. I am an educator. I will probably always be an educator. It is my life's work and I enjoy the work. The work that I do now in terms of reforming schools is for all of the, all of the children come from trauma-based backgrounds. And the vast majority are classified as special education. They're the most difficult to teach and educate and engage, but we're doing it. We're not there yet, but we're doing it. Thank you.
All right, let's see. So a lot of my community work has been direct service with different events, different organizations, so I'll just go down organizations. Let's see, when summer opportunities was good grades pay, I was an assistant dance teacher and assistant writer coach for youth and students. See, moving on next. Urban League, I was a program coordinator for active school program and we did a lot of volunteer work with different events out in our community with our youth, our youth scholars. Where else? Right now, I serve on the Advisory Council Action for Better Communities New Directions Program, which is an adult outpatient clinic. At Hillside, I have students that we teach them independent living skills out in different communities, not just Rochester, but also the surrounding counties. Let's see, where else have I been? Crisis Nursery, which is a emergency daycare for families who may one day have an emergency, they don't have daycare and they don't have the money. We provide that for them. And a lot of direct service with the Department of Social Services. Just all around.
Hey Kitty, for our next question, we have an announcement from Andrew Thomas, our office director.
Hey, everybody, thanks. That'll be very quick. I'm Andrew, I'm the fundraising and membership director for Metro Justice on staff. I hope you've all enjoyed this experience and have found it very meaningful. And I'm really looking forward to hearing all of your questions for our guests. But I'm gonna pass the hat around right now if you have, can offer anything to help us cover the costs of running this space. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next question. What will you do to dramatically increase the presence of Black teachers in Rochester City School District? And also, how will you combat the racism amongst the large portion of European-American teachers?
Well, you don't ask difficult questions. We, in the state of New York, are getting ready to face a huge teacher shortage crisis regardless of race. So it's gonna make it even more difficult to find teachers of color. But the way in which I know to do it is to go where the teachers are, where the teacher preparation is. So with the local universities, we should begin to recruit them at the beginning of their college careers. Those who have some interest in teaching and ask them if they want to have experiences, field experience in our schools, even before they get to the plaintiff program where it's possible. I do think we should recruit from historically Black universities as well as our local universities. And in terms of addressing racism, racism, race is an organizing principle in every aspect of our society. And so we need not just talk about, you know, teachers, and I think it's important that we do. But we do that through professional development, through cultural experiences, through getting teachers to go into the communities where kids live because they don't go there because they're afraid and you cannot teach kids if you're afraid of them.
You know, I would like to sum my answer by saying, we should just hire them. I mean, we have a lot of teachers of color in our community that cannot get past a certain step in the hiring process in our district. Also, we have a lot, we can think about that on the other side. We have a lot of TAs in our district that we should be working with local colleges to figure out how we can support them in getting their certifications so that they can transition to being a teacher since they're already in the classrooms. And I also think that we should increase our efforts in figuring out how do we make our teacher profession more appealing to, since we're specifically talking about people of color, how do we make that appealing to them? Because I do think that we as commissioners, we kind of have to, I mean, we do have some good ones right now. We kind of have to figure out how to get outside of our box. I mean, we can't just continue to sit on a board and think that everything is gonna be streamlined through our district. We have to figure out what relationships we need to make outside of our district so that we can start developing the resources that we need. Do we have to go to a state level and say, we have to reconfigure how we accept, or the certifications of how we accept teachers? I mean, charter schools accept teachers with certain criteria. And can we make that feasible to work for us for the time being because we are about to be in a crisis? And because we have students in our seats today that need to see somebody that looks like them today? But we can't just, we can't just pull people out of thin air and we can't just continue.
Before I got on the board, I used to actually sue the district for discrimination cases. But I gotta tell you, since getting on the board, I think, and I appreciate the fact that some of you might think we haven't made any progress. I personally believe I'm more effective from the boardroom than the courtroom. And I can say that as a lawyer. When you sue, the only thing it does is it might give your client a little bit of money, but that's about the extent of it. It doesn't change things systemically. So I decided to get inside the system. There are some challenges for that system. Less than 1% of people graduating from teacher colleges are African-American men like me. My undergraduate degree was in teaching, social studies. There's not a lot of us. The other challenge that we have is last in, first out. That's basically the New York State statute that says, without regard to color, if you're the last teacher in, you're the first one to get bumped by seniority. Something has to change and Albany needs to fix that because that does affect our ability to retain people. But that doesn't mean we can't do things. And I think we've heard a couple of people mention it. We could grow our own. We have teaching assistants and we already have a program for doing just that. We have the Rochester Teaching Institute, I think it's, RTI, that has graduated a lot of folks, who, some have gone to teacher, some have not. But the last thing, I see the yellow card here. The last thing I want to mention is, I would ask you, why is that last board? I happen to be out of town attending something for the school district in Atlanta. I put up a zealous fight for the board stepping up its game. The superintendent recommends, the board decides. And what I recommended is, we go into executive session because there was a vote about certain people that are gonna be placed. And I said, we need to understand not only who the superintendent recommended, but what was the pool of applicants around that person? The board can do that and we need to do more of that.
Thank you, man. There's part two of, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. Yeah, I'm gonna answer. So I'm a very research-focused person. I've done a lot of research on this, in particular for New York State. And what I've found is that we have a retention issue. So that retention issue not only stems in elementary to, you know, high school. So we have students who want to think about going into teaching and then somewhere along the way, either they drop out of high school or they just switch to another career. Then when they get to, I used to work at MCC for five years, directly with the poorest population, which were the students that were required to wear for our social services and had lots of things to manage and overcome. But unfortunately, what happens is there was a retention issue there. And there's still a very much prevalent retention issue for students of color at higher education, high school, higher education. So even if we get them to college, we still have a retention issue getting them graduated from college. Then they graduate from college and then they go on to do their credentials for teaching and their certifications, and there's a retention issue there as well. And so honestly, I think it's like a four-point prompt that needs to be looked at and all four need supports. All four. We have to provide support for our students in high school and higher education at the master's level. And then, you know what's crazy too, is that they've gone through all those steps and they go on and start teaching. And then there's a retention issue in the schools that they hired them. And so again, we have to look at all those things. We have to put in supports and we have to put in some mentorship and guidance. And it's really all about the supports for me, so.
Thank you. Second part to this question. How strong a stance will you take when union leadership opposes mandated anti-racism training for teachers?
I can speak for this. I have not experienced that resistance. It has not come from the unions. To be honest, it's come from 131 West Broad Street. That's the problem. It's not the unions. It's just the silos aren't connected. And also what teachers will tell you, some teachers will tell you, this isn't the union leaders. They'll tell you, well, Albany has so many mandates. We have to prepare these kids for the test. We don't have time to put this other stuff in. Well, if you're a creative instructor, I can mention it because he's my kid, which my son is, you can talk about Hamlet and Tupac, right? You can do that. But there are teachers that are just not trained in understanding it. So they go back to the fallback position and their administrators protect them for this and say, well, you can't do both. I believe you can do both. I do not believe it's the unions. I believe it's our teachers and our administrators and central offices lack of preparation on the ability to integrate and infuse this important pedagogy into the curriculum. I do not think it's the unions. Because Dr. Susan Goodwin has been there for years. The union is paid for, the district's not paying for her salary. The union is. But finally, the good news is, I think we're breaking down the silos. Now she is working with the central office in preparing our teachers for presentation of this important pedagogy.
So I just want to say, you know, very publicly and probably watching live, if there is anything that needs, that I would need to fight for families in the district, I'm willing to take whoever on. It doesn't matter who they are, what their title is. If it's the right thing to do, if it will benefit our families, then I'm gonna make that, I'm gonna have that fighting. Very tough skin, so there's nothing that they can say, do to actually harm me. I'm good. And what I will do is, if I need people, I have people. I work in this community, I'm a direct service provider. I'm a parent in the district for the last 16 years. I know families. I know families in almost every school across, from public to charter to homeschool, private. I have families on deck. So if I needed to fight them for this fight, we're gonna be ready for this fight. But what I will say is, I absolutely support anti-racism training. My only hesitation is that if we have people who are not engaged and want that training, it's gonna be kind of in one ear, out the other. So it absolutely has to be more than just professional development training. There has to be other things implemented to get that across. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's not a problem, I'm not gonna create one. It's not the union that's stopping the training of teachers. So we have to figure out what it is and I have to believe when you say it's 131 West Broad. But when you say it, if you call it anti-racism, then you're automatically setting up, we're gonna fight against this. Can we call it something else? Can we, can we talk about what does it take to effectively educate the children that are in front of you? And what may be some of the things that are preventing you from doing that? Because when you make a person feel as if they are a perpetrator of something that they're not even aware of, you set up an antagonistic situation. So I'd like to work with that. And then I want to go back to one thing about the teachers, African-American teachers, which is true, which won't show up. In many universities, teachers are not, teacher, people who are majoring in education must pass the National Teachers Exam in order to continue for student teaching. They're getting stopped right there. African-American students are not passing that test. It is a gatekeeper and it is one reason why we don't have more people in the pipeline. I think we're bad.
So for me, I would definitely, I don't want to say I would fight against them, but I would stand strong in my beliefs that it should be mandatory. And, you know, when we say the word mandatory, it always has a negative connotation, but it's not something that's negative. It just means you have to do it. And for me, I'm not a parent. For me, for me, I don't think that there should be one teacher or one person in our district that should say that they don't want to take this training. Like, I'm a social worker and we do a lot of home visits. We do a lot of direct service. And I know me and my colleagues, we talk all the time about wanting to have more time to go to trainings because what does trainings do? They reinforce something that you already know or they teach you new strategies to help be a better server, be a better server. And so for me, I don't think that there should be any staff in our district that feels that they shouldn't have to go through this training because we've identified an issue that is hindering our students, our most precious valuable thing in our district. We have identified what a barrier is and every single staff person should want to know, what is gonna help me to protect our students, to protect our babies? I mean, when I hear mandatory training, I know that people like to run the other way, but it's not a punishment. It's really a tool to help you navigate through this. It might make your job easier in the classroom. You might be able to manage better. I would definitely, I mean, whoever we would have to stand up against, we should be standing strong and really trying to talk to everybody to let them know this is not for punishment purposes. It's really, you know, a way we can, like Van said, I mean, we have issues with resources in regards to money. I did not see the red card. No, no, I know. Our camera's still down here like this.
We're supposed to be done at nine. I've got all those cards and I'm trying to give to his names like I can. Okay. The School of Arts, Children's School, School of Outlaws, the Ola Program are just examples of schools that have specific missions and have schools of excellence. What ends are you willing to do to fight for the continuation of these excellent programs? That's the question. How are you willing to fight for continuation of these programs or expansion of these programs too?
The schools that you just mentioned are considered to be alternative schools. They shouldn't be alternative. That should be what we do. We know what works with our young people. We know that students like to perform. We know that students want to engage with one another. We know that they want to create. We know that those circles that are held at the children's school in the beginning of the day helps kids kind of stabilize themselves and focus on the day. So we know that. We have to stop treating them as alternatives and then the rest of them as opposed to saying, the traditional way does not work. We have to be much more forthright in saying that teachers, administrators, this is not a choice for you. Inquiry-based learning is not a choice for you. Figuring out ways to have learning centers in your classroom regardless of what the age of the student is, is not a choice. We're talking about what are evidence-based practices that work with urban children. So let's stop having the few that have been around for about 20 years and have that the majority. Because that's what our students want and that's what our parents want, okay? Thank you.
So I think we have to get more creative on how we bring resources into our schools. I do think that we, I don't want to get in trouble for saying this, but we spend a lot of time focused on ELA and math scores, things that, you know, we as adults want our kids to learn. But, you know, kids want to do different things. And so we have to understand that even if a school is excelling, I know I've heard earlier tonight, if a school is excelling, then that means that we may need to take some resources from that school. But I think it's the total opposite. I don't think that we should be penalizing students who are doing well by taking money so then we cap them when they can continue to grow exponentially. So for that, when I say being creative, I think that we have to figure out a way to keep having resources pour in so that we aren't taking from the mouth of one's child to give to another. We have to figure out, can we work with the city? I mean, we have an ad hoc committee, three on three on three. County Lodge, City Council, and School Board. What is happening in those committee meetings to say that, okay, we need your help to bring these resources in because we don't have it financially, but you have an organization over here that can come into our schools and continue these programs and to help them grow? So I do think that we do need to focus on continuing to help those things grow. And I do think that we need to start multiplying what is working across the district and not just have it in specific schools.
You know, I think we've had some successes in this area and some failures. Again, I, you know, it's one of the things about being an incumbent is you have to always be truthfully and otherwise we're gonna call you a liar. We've not done everything that we wanted to do in this area. For example, some of you may recall, I really pushed hard for the replication of SODA. It's a model that works. And for two separate superintendents, because we have this model that says, well, the superintendent does everything. The superintendents, two successive superintendents said no and we have not expanded that model, we should. But we've had some successes. But we've had some successes. World of Inquiring is an expeditionary learning school. We expanded it to Walter Cooper Academy. So there is some recognition that that approach works and we expanded it. The school out walls is officially called a consortium school. The state divvies those consortium schools out. You can't just open up a consortium school without school out walls and just do it. The state has to give you approval to do that. I have been saying to the superintendent, we need to ask for an extension of that because that's a whole different approach and it works really well. And the other thing is, I see the yellow one just went up. We've done, we've created our own models. The East High School EPO, let me remind you all, that is run by the Rochester City School District, not by the University of Rochester. They are a superintendent there, just like Barbara D. Williams is a superintendent anyway. Number 17 School, that is a community school. That is also a neighborhood school. And finally, Sumi Jena Cio is stepping into number 19 School, the superintendent there. And we've already seen preliminary, some really positive results on the LA scores.
So let me just tell you guys, my daughter, my youngest child was born in school one. Her school was closed within this last school year. And so we just transitioned over to school 15. And I went to the orientation. First of all, so as a parent, my kids went to school six before they closed six. Then we went to 28, and then they were in northeast, northwest, which is at the Douglas campus. So this is my first time ever getting information about an orientation and a very small school supply list. There's literally like five things on her school's supply list. And it was a brand-new experience to me as a parent in the district. And then I went to the orientation and they hold like two community meetings every, you know, every week on B and D days. And they invite parents to come in. And even if you just wanna share a recipe, they're like, well, you can come and share a poem or recipe or something that's happening in the community that you wanna share with other parents. And it was so eye-opening. I was like, my mouth was open the whole time. And I was like, why is this not being replicated in other schools? And so, one, I signed up for the PTO right away because I wanna be involved in the school-based planning at her school. But the other thing is that I did find things, very small things, that could be implemented now in other schools. You know, getting that information weeks in advance. There were times where, you know, we went through different grades at 28. I didn't know what the school's supply list was. I didn't know who the kids' teachers were. You know, I would have to take time off work and go in and try to see if I can navigate that and figure it out. But many families can't do that. And they don't work in jobs that allows them to do that. So I would start by implementing some of the smaller things now and figuring out how to expand later. Sorry, my time is up.
You got time for one more question? All of our schools have high concentrations of poverty.
Classroom, that includes classroom sizes. I've thought a lot about poverty being a state of mind as well as being a status. And so we have to figure out how do we connect with our students to empower them, to let them know that no matter what situation you're in, that you can overcome because then that will empower them to want to learn in a classroom. For the wider, for the wider community, I do think that, again, we have to figure out how our relationship means something with the city. If we have resources in different organizations, if we have individuals in our community that have resources, we have to partner with them and have them have, and have them be meaningful partnerships. And I just wanna say, when we're talking about models and the things that we're doing, I hear a lot about, you know, passing a buck to the superintendent. I just wanna be very clear that if we feel as a board that there is something that we need to be implementing throughout our district because we have had research and we understand that this is something that we need, I need the community to understand that you depend on us to make sure that the superintendent is doing what we need. But I just, I don't, I don't want people to be confused that the superintendent can just say no to something and then the board just follows suit. That is not how it should be working.
I agree. I don't applaud too much when my opponents are making a point. I agree 101%, and that's why a lot of people get frustrated with me. And to be told, and there are people in this room that know, I do it at the small scale and I do it at the big scale. And I get in a lot of trouble. But if people were to know the law the way you do, we would have a different district. But people are constantly deferring to the superintendent, which is the flavor of the month. Every three years, we get a new superintendent. They come in, they do something different. And the board just sits, I'm not part of that. But they will sit on their hands, yup, 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 yup. And every time, we go from K through A to K through middle school. It's constantly changing. But how do you deal with concentrated poverty? I'm a firm believer, I wish I had more time to talk about this. The community schools approach, a true community schools approach engages in conversations like housing, jobs, criminal justice. It gets people together and holistically deals with the problem. Not just in the school walls, but every building and every home outside that school. That's how we deal with concentrated poverty, as a community.
Not Commissioner Mari Adams, I just wanted to make that.
So actually, this whole time I've been running, I'm the focus of poverty. And let me just say, I know the children that are in poverty can learn, but it is so much harder. One, I come from poverty. I moved to Rochester with two garbage bags, a two-year-old on the Amtrak train and slept on a mattress on the floor for years. And so we can kind of get a little bit out of it, just a little bit, just a job. And I literally was on the bus for like 13 years. I just started driving six years ago and it blows people's minds. But I just didn't have a car, I didn't have access. And then along the way, I ended up having to adopt my brother's daughter because they were on drugs and they were in poverty. And I had just a little bit at that time, and so I had just enough. And so what I can tell you as a parent who's had that experience firsthand, and my children who went through it firsthand, is that it is extremely difficult. Yes, you have to be very consistent and persistent to get out of it. But I wish I would have had more supports in place along the way. And I felt that every time I went to a door, it was kind of slammed in my face or, you know, I went to go get food stamps. They want you to do all these things to get food stamps. So I can't miss work because I don't work at a job that affords me PTO or time off. So no, I can't keep coming to appointments just so I can get $90 in food stamps. So my plan to address poverty in the district is to create a support plan for every family. And I absolutely think it's feasible and possible, not only within the district, but of all the community agencies that are here. There's an accountability that has to be pushed right back into the community, to the nonprofit who gets thousands and thousands of dollars in grants to support the same families that we're supporting, but we're not aligning these resources. DSS, I can tell you, has to be at the table to address poverty. We ask our parents to web and go outside in all parts of the community. And we do not look at the impact that that has on children. I'm sorry, I'm not ready, guys.
When we talk about concentrated poverty, what do we talk about really? It's a code word for poor black and brown people, right? The schools, school district has to call the question on the economic community because the answer to poverty is jobs. Our children are poor because their parents are poor. We have seen the Rochester City change from a place that was booming with jobs. Kodak had 60,000 jobs. It now has less than 2,500, all right? That is impacting us. So we have to call the question. Because you are poor. People do not, are not born, and that's their plight in life, plight in life, or whatever the word is. It's because of social stratification, structural systemic racism. So we have to call it as it is. Why is there a disproportionate number of our families and children that are suffering with no jobs? Many of whom have high school and college degrees, okay? What is my job as a board member? To call it out, to tell the truth, and to say, what are we going to do with that $500 million that we got in this region? How does that translate to jobs and training for parents and families who need it?
Thank you, Dr. Zolzer. I have a statement to read, it's not a question. I'm an angry parent and everyone was great, but parents need to be viewed as employers and respected and invited and welcome to turn our district around. That's one of the cards. Round of applause, some participants on the floor.